Okay, if you're ready. Ready to go.
Okay.
Ready to roll? Call the Exeter Township Planning Commission meeting of October the 17th, 2022 to order. Please rise for the pledge of flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening's meeting is being livestreamed and recorded, just for everybody's knowledge. And we have Planning Commission member Jack Payo is joining us via conference phone. So he'll be part of the meeting as well. First item of business this evening, do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by less?
I'll second.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Can I ask a question?
Sure, Jeff.
Um, last week, or last month, there was a problem with the audio on the stream.
Okay.
All right, I just wanted to make you aware of it.
Okay.
I'll look into it. Yeah. Thanks for letting us know, though.
Yep.
Thanks.
Kind of, kind of doesn't make any sense if you don't have any audio.
Yeah. So there was no audio at all?
That's what I understand, yeah.
Okay.
Someone told me there was no audio.
And then, just for the audience, the order of business, as far as public comments are concerned, if there's a comment you'd like to make relative to the agenda item, just raise your hand and we'll call on you accordingly. And then, at the end, we'll also open the floor to any public comment. First item under business is an application for review. APES Services preliminary land development plan. Are we just, Steve Bensinger here to represent?
What we should do, Glenn, is just accept it.
Do we have a motion to accept that application?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by less?
I'll second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
His audio's working.
He's, he's on lag. Okay. So first item for review then would be the 5520 through 5550 Perkeomen Avenue final plan.
I'm here for that one also.
Yep, Steve.
I was supposed to be here. And since he isn't, I'm here for APES.
Would you like for us to defer, we'll go to APES first? Okay. All right. Yep, that's fine. So this would be a preliminary plan. And this is the project we had seen previously.
As you may recall, at our last Planning Commission meeting in September, APES approached the Planning Commission as looking for a deferral of a complete land development submission. They were requesting that the Planning Commission consider waiving the full plan submission with a, what we call abbreviated land development that would be reviewed by the Township Administration in our office. The request went in front of the Board of Supervisors at their October 10th regular meeting. The Board of Supervisors voted against granting that waiver. However, they recommended that the Plan B submitted and the Planning Commission would review and look at the items that are, I'll say, of importance for this, this development. This is a existing use, so existing facility that's changing use per zoning ordinance. We require, whether if it's a building expansion of 25% more of the footprint or 2,500 square feet, whichever is the lesser two, you do not need a land development plan or if a change in use, since this change in use is being proposed as an adult daycare center, the land development plan submission is required. It is a permitted use in a township common zoning district. This evening, the, the plans were submitted after, last Monday, our office did conduct a cursory review. There's a draft review letter that's been placed on SharePoint of what we consider some of the major issues, and I'll, I'll allow Steve to proceed on it, and I'm available to answer any more questions.
Yeah, if we, if we look at the review letter, page one is just the submission, the information that was submitted. Page, page two starts with zoning ordinance. The plan proposes a change of use, which is what Joe basically just explained, it's going to be an adult daycare. So because of that change, we, we got to come with a land development. Number two, any required landscaping screens may be, may need to be provided in accordance with provisions outlined in section 39031, 390 dash 37P. Additional landscaping should be considered where the property line is adjacent to the residential area. And I don't know if any of the property-
That, that may not be as applicable.
Yeah.
Because we're, we're against the commercial area, so that wouldn't be applicable. So you could probably scratch that second part of that comment.
Okay. All right, good.
Sorry about that.
Oh, that's fine. All proposed signage will be required to meet section 39069. I think you're going to just keep the signs that are there, right? So no, they may be changed in some fashion, but no additional or, or additional signs, no additional signs will be proposed. The intent of the use of the facility should be noted on the plan, we can do that. Number five, the existing building is located within the rear and side yard setbacks, we consider that pre-existing nonconformity, I agree. Number six, applicant shall verify that required all street parking is met in accordance with section 39037. When we looked at the ordinance, we did it under office, and if you took the square footage requirements, you have, what, one space every 200 square feet, you need 35 parking spaces, there's 32 parking spaces out there. 32 is more than adequate for their use. I'd like to argue that it's pre-existing nonconformity. It used to be, when it first was built, I think it was a doctor's office years ago. And I don't know if that's acceptable or not to make that argument, that it's pre-existing nonconformity.
Steve, do you have any other facilities that currently are in operation that might have some traffic data or parking?
This is Mark Kellenberger.
Mark, do you, do you have any other facilities that might have some existing, I'll say, traffic count, mean number of spaces that you need for a facility?
Yeah, so we have a spa, or a property at 200 Penn Street in the city of Redding where we have, it's not exactly apples to apples, but I believe, you know, we have 68 parking spaces there, but the way that we run our operations there, which is not the same as we'd run our operations there. The intent behind this is we're going to have, it's more of a drop-off pickup type of thing for the adult day program as opposed to, you know, there's going to be offices full of people. The, the whole idea with, with COVID, post-COVID is we hotel, so our staff or Jason's staff, they'd be in and out of the building. And they wouldn't, so I may work Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, Jason may work Tuesday and Thursday, and we share the same office.
So essentially, most of your customers are just going to be transported and then-
Correct.
The park, parking would only be involved with the employees?
That's, that's correct. And the plan, and Jason, please correct me if I'm wrong, but the plan is, it's like, it's, there's a morning session and afternoon session, so there's drop-off and pickup in the morning, drop-off and pickup, you know, around lunchtime, you know, for like a morning session and afternoon session, and then at the end of the day, there'll be pickup.
Okay.
A lot of the individuals will share transportation in and out. It's not 25 or 20 vehicles.
Approximately, how many employees would, would be there?
I would say rough, well, I mean, at any given time or total?
At any one time that you would need parking for employees?
I would say maybe 20.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, it, it could ebb and flow, I'm not-
Is there any way to add two spaces?
So can I, can I point that out on the plan? So our, our property pin is right, right here. We, we could add spaces. I think the concern, if we add spaces there, would be access for, it's your property back in here, that we add that, you wouldn't be able to, if somebody's parked there, you wouldn't be able to access if you would need to. The other issue too is the construction fence from when they did the demo for Giant is still, is still present there. Another option that I saw is that there are parking spaces on this side of the building, I, I don't know if that's the northeast, south, or west, I guess it's more the north, that are on your property that, you know, we would be interested in maybe coming with some type of arrangement to, to rent or lease those spaces if we could work something out.
That would be acceptable.
It'd be more of like a lease agreement with your adjoining property, which would be the township-owned property. The Planning Commission, any feelings on that? It's not uncommon?
I think before we even entertain those discussions, we would want to talk with the solicitor, just, I know they're trying to do something with this property and-
Okay.
Before we would even entertain.
Entertain it.
I think it makes more sense to let them have two or whatever spaces they need on their own property and fix the situation that the township is causing with, you know, the construction fence and the concrete that might be left from the tearing down a Giant. And then they're on their property, you don't have to get into anything that's-
Okay.
That would be preferred.
No, you're not getting in any, you know?
I, I agree, I agree.
You get to do what you want on your property, we, we clean up whatever's prohibiting you from doing it and-
We were just trying to be, you know?
Yeah, well, yeah.
Make sure that you're able to-
Yeah, we have plenty of space to put two more parking spaces in here. That's not, the issue would be that if you guys needed to access that for whatever reason in the back there-
Well, technically, that concrete slab and access has to be addressed whenever somebody new buys the property, so-
Correct, correct, agree.
So if that was addressed, then-
Yeah, if it's addressed now, or we, we give you a waiver till the property's sold and they clean it up, or something of that nature. A contingent waiver.
Yeah, I would tend to agree with you, Todd, that's the best way to-
I agree with Todd. I, I think maybe the best approach is, just to add on to what Will mentioned, is we'll discuss with the solicitor, but if, if we can make those provisions and they're allowed to put the extra two spaces on their property, that probably would be the preferred. And it would stay on it, then, then it wouldn't affect any future intentions of, of the, the township has for that land, if it's sold and so forth or developed. If, if the Planning Commission's in agreement with that, we can pursue that avenue.
Yep, agreed. Glenn, if I could, one, I guess somewhat related question. The access in and out of the site, working with township, is there an easement in place for access, or do you have to work through a new access easement to get access and what, and tied to that, looking at that north, guess it'd be east corner when you're talking about parking, there's actually a portion of the township's prop, parking on this property as well, to probably be coordinated?
There, there was an easement, or is an easement plan that was submitted?
The, I believe the township and Supportive Concepts are the parent company, I believe that agreement was just approved at the last meeting.
And that would, but that related to water utilities?
Utilities, okay.
So, yeah, you're, there is no, like, again, if you don't mind, to come in here off of Perkeaman Avenue, we don't have anything in place currently for you guys for vehicle traffic.
Yeah, there's technically no access easement that I'm aware of. I never saw the utility agreement, I don't know if it might have been in there or not, I don't know if you saw it, Mark, but it-
That's, that's just related to utilities is all that did.
So, it doesn't appear there's any access easement.
Okay, I was, I was probably misled as well, I thought it was the access and the, and the easements for utilities, it's why the issue never was raised.
I've never thought.
Yeah, I, I haven't-
It's, we could, we'll take a look at it with our solicitor, and that's something that will need to be addressed. I, I assumed it was, but we'll definitely look into that and follow up.
And Joe, that was my point, if, if it wasn't, it seems like you could roll some of this into that agreement as well, getting the fence off the property, maybe non-designating those spaces in the corner so you don't run into any conflicts in the future?
I agree.
And if you would like us to lease those parking spaces back to you, we'd be more than happy to talk about that.
Or let me count them towards the-
Okay, I think that can be worked out. I guess the next item would be subdivision land development. Number one, the applicant is requesting a waiver to submit a preliminary slash final land development plan.
That is correct. Since the supervisors did not waive the entire land development process, that forced us into a preliminary approval and a final plan approval, so now we're asking for a preliminary slash final since, you know, there's no new construction, I don't have a brush and set of control, you know, I don't have all the stuff you normally need, but that gets you into that.
Yeah. How, how does everybody feel about recommending a waiver and allowing them to preliminary final plan? Speeds up the process a little bit for the applicant.
I agree, it makes sense.
Yeah.
So it would need a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors to waive, a waiver and submit a preliminary final development plan.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Todd, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eric. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next one, the plans may be subject to requirements of Article 5A for the Township Common District.
Hey, Glenn, Glenn?
Yes.
Glenn, can you hear me? Hey, a question back on the, on the, with the storage, is, did they ever, because I didn't see anything in any of the write-ups, did they ever figure out where the drainage pipe actually went and where it exits? Was that ever found? Did, did anybody ever find out what happened or where it goes?
That, that's on the, the second project we'll be looking at.
We flipped the project.
Yeah, we flipped the agenda item, so yeah, we're, we're still on the-
We'll make sure we find the pipe when we get to that one.
The property adjacent to the promenade.
Thank you, sorry, I jumped ahead.
Okay, and two was, the plan may be subject to requirements of Article 5.
The building is existing, they're not proposing any type of exterior modifications, correct? It's just interior work. The section probably most likely wouldn't be applicable, it was put in there just for discussion purposes. Arsaldo, as you may recall, was revised to include some standards and so forth for new building construction or, or repurposed. If a building's being re-modif, renovated, or the exterior's being renovated, there's some, some parameters and requirements. In this situation, they are keeping the building intact as is to remain. So to the discretion of the Planning Commission, typically, these would be required, but in this situation, it's a pre-existing building and they're not going to be changing that architecture or building facade.
Yep.
Okay. Outdoor lighting, the existing, the existing parking lot lighting is proposed to remain as it existed. Any changes are proposed to be made. Permit plans for the lighting changes are to be submitted to township for review and approval prior to installation. Right now, there's, there's two wall packs. I'll say on the northern wall, we assume north is straight up here, or eastern wall, to kind of look where, where north is. There's two wall packs there, and then there's a light standard here, which is the same light standards that were throughout the entire shopping center. That, this light, to my knowledge, is not functioning, although I'm not 100% sure, I haven't been there tonight, but it just looks like to me that it may not be functioning. What we'd like to do is just get that working for this parking lot, and then we have the two wall, wall packs in that light, and I think we'll be covered with lighting license. So.
So I believe the township had de-energized the parking lot.
Oh, they did?
When they, when we took down the shopping center.
Okay, so-
I don't believe there's any lights up there. Actually, that's not correct, there are lights.
There, there's lights, but they're, they're not working.
Okay.
There, there's light up there currently because of the people parking, the equipment up there have put up temporary lighting that somehow is operable.
That's meta.
I believe, I believe it's temporary lighting, it's, it's pretty bright, pretty nice. You can see the trucks when you drive by.
Other township staff about that and-
But if, if possible, we'd like to re-energize that one light that's on our property.
Does that mean requirements, just, just one light for that whole parking lot?
I don't know how they're wired.
Wall, you have wall-mounted lights, correct?
But that's, he said it's facing north.
They're, they're out here, which actually shine on to the parking lot, that's on it.
Yeah, they're, I mean, they would have to submit something to us just to make sure that they have adequate lighting.
Okay. We can do that.
It just, it just doesn't seem like one light for that whole front parking lot is adequate.
Yeah, and the other thing is it may be cheaper for us just to put wall packs across the front of the building.
And that would, I think that would be acceptable.
And I don't know if you want that pole energized and power coming to it from off your property. There, again, you're relying on-
Yeah, well, we'd re-tie the electric in off the building to, to just that one pole.
Pole.
I, I would think we'd, we'd prefer, if we could put wall packs up, I think we'd prefer to do that, that way we could run everything inside our building, and that way if something goes wrong, we're not pointing fingers at each other, vice versa.
Okay.
That will change the facade a little bit.
Next one, fire prevention. The plan does not indicate the locations of existing fire hydrants in the area, the project site, the plan should show the location of the nearest existing hydrant along Perkeaman Avenue. This can be shown in the location plan or, or in a note on the plan. There actually is a fire hydrant right at this location, and as part of the agreement with the township for the utilities, the water is part of that, and that fire hydrant will be functional. Okay, so I think that one's taken care of.
So it just has to be added to the drawing or the plan?
Well, the fire hydrant's on the plan.
It is on there.
We do show it on the plan, yeah.
So.
Next one, the existing building is currently sprinkled, that's just a statement. Number three, on page three, the access drive into and through the site complies with the width requirements of the fire code, there, there's access to two sides of the existing building, there, there do not appear to be any turning radius issues with the access to the site, another statement. Accessibility requirements of the PA Uniform Construction Code, the existing building entrances and exits are accessible. Number two, the number of accessible parking spaces associated with the building exceeds the requirements of the accessibility codes. Number three, any proposed renovations to the building for the proposed use may require renovations to the existing toilet facilities and other facilities within the building for compliance with the accessibility requirements of the 2021 International Building Code and 2017 ANZA 117.1 Standard for Accessibility in Usable Building Facilities. I believe you already have a building permit that isn't issued but approved, or is it issued? Yeah, we have, we have the demo permit for the demolition inside. So I think we're, I think we're okay with that, with that comment.
Yeah, and all those things fall under building, building code and would go with the building permit.
Basically, yeah, they're going to apply.
And then the last comment is, under general comments, additional comments may be generated pursuant to subsequent submissions of revised.
There wasn't any storm order, they're not, they're not proposing any impervious, so that's, that hasn't been an issue. Same with disturbance, ENS is not going to be required since they're not disturbing more than 5,000 square feet, actually, they're not doing any disturbance. So those, those, those issues were not raised. It was basically just an overview of what we thought, or some of the items that came to our attention, so the Planning Commission had a, had an idea of, of what to look at, and this will be able to help the Board of Supervisors as well when action's taken for the waiver.
Does the front lighting packs that they're going to put on the side of the building, does that have to be shown on the plan?
They'll have to submit a lighting-
They'll submit a lighting plan, and then they'll submit catalog cuts of the lighting fixtures themselves.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, so with that, work on your revisions and additions and-
No chance we can get conditional approval, conditional on the letter?
We, we, we need to get the approval from the supervisors.
Submit to board, yeah.
Yep. So, you know, assuming that happens, get the revisions done, and then we'll take a look next month.
Okay. See you next month.
All right.
Thank you.
Steve, I'll get you on the agenda for the board for the 24th.
24th.
The next, next Monday.
Okay.
For the waiver request.
All right, thanks.
All right. Next item, we will go to the 5520 through 5550 Perkeomen Avenue final plan, and Steve's here to represent that also, which this is the storage facility down by Shellborne Square Shopping Plaza.
Yes, we submitted a final plans. And we got Joe's review letter. I think we're pretty far along, there's, there's a couple items that are still hanging out there. One would be the PennDOT permit, that, just to bring you up to date real quick. PennDOT permit, we're expecting that any day. Conservation District approval, we, we submitted the plans, we paid the extra, my client paid the extra fee for the expedited review, it's in that process, we expect to have that three or four weeks, maybe, I don't know. But it should be quicker than normal, rather than months, rather than months, it should be weeks. Every, a lot of the other stuff in the letter is, either says resolved, or it's the agreements, the escrow, signatures on the plans and things like that. There is the one issue that Joe has bolded under subdivision land development. The applicant is proposing a 10-foot wide sidewalk easement, a legal description and plan should be prepared and provided to the township for review. You want to set, Joe?
Yeah, Steve, I just, I just wanted to bold that one, because I know you, in your review letter or response letter stated that the board was in agreement with the 10-foot, you, you mentioned where you might be having to get more right-of-way for PennDOT as part of HOP.
Well, yeah, we actually had to add-
I mean, we're in agreement with the 10-foot, we'll just need a final plan staged, the legal description and the plan, it's, you know-
And you want a separate exhibit?
Yes, yes. The only reason I wanted to bring it back to the attention of the, of the Planning Commission is the fact that you might be requiring more, that's part of the PennDOT.
Yeah, PennDOT took, I think it was an extra five feet-
Okay.
From the west side up to the driveway, up to and fro, it's actually here, it's right here, it starts and it goes all the way across the front because of the widening, they're, we're putting a D cell lane because of that widening, PennDOT wants that extra right-of-way, and then we put the sidewalk behind that and, you know, followed the right-of-way then.
So they are requiring a D cell lane?
Yes.
Okay, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Because we've had a few that they wouldn't allow a D cell lane when we wanted it, and we, we've had a, we've had a mixed, Yuki Morgan had a D cell, then the, the next one, the magistrate, they refused to put a, put a D cell lane, but this one they are.
I don't, I don't get them, and I don't get them, yeah.
And we were pretty adamant about the magistrate having a D cell lane just to stay consistent with, with Yuki Morgan Daycare Center. It just seems odd, that's why I was wondering.
Yeah, and Yuki wasn't happy about that when she saw they got away with it.
No, no, but I think for safety reasons, we were, the township was concerned that making sure that, with the amount of traffic that cars are getting off on the D cell lane safely and not getting rear-ended at all, but I'm, I'm really surprised, yeah.
Yeah, here we have you, said probably it's less traffic than, than either one.
I was going to say probably your developments by the least.
Yeah.
I was going to say the magistrate and daycare is constantly having, so that's interesting.
Just on that topic, I mean, the, so you're providing, at least as a minimum, the 10-foot that was required, in some cases you're providing more as needed by PennDOT's wiremaps.
Well, we're providing, and I think it's additional five feet where they, where they wanted it.
Yeah.
Okay, and then we're creating a 10-foot wide sidewalk for the township that will follow.
Yeah, we're, we're fine with the 10-foot, it's just, as Steve said, I wanted to bring it to your attention, that might get more legal right-of-way, PennDOT might require, but they'll do, we just want the easement description and the plan separate so that when- But they'll do, we just want the easement description and, and the plan separate so that when it's offered to dedication, it can be recorded separately.
I don't know. Joe, do you think we have to go through the review? Do you want to?
No, I, I think, I think the main issue, it, just to, I'll, I'll just give a brief summary. This plan, as you know, has been before us before on, on several occasions. This is a final plan submission. As Steve mentioned, really, everything that's required is just typically what's, what's expected at the final plan stage as far as getting approvals, uh, signatures and so forth and utilities. And that, and that's been, there's no major issues outstanding. The only issue, what Jack brought up a little bit earlier is, is this storm pipe that traverses along the frontage of the storage shed, which actually traverses along McDonald's and so forth. This is a 27-inch pipe. The township, we did research, cannot find ownership. Uh, we tend to believe that this pipe may have been put in from one of the previous owners before the development. We did not do a title search, but we did pull PennDOT plans, some subdivision plans where that pipe is shown. But the township has no evidence nor any documentation that they owned and maintained it. Ironically, even the McDonald's plans don't even show the plan, show the pipe. They show their pipe. PennDOT plans don't show the pipe as well. So the issue at hand is, excuse me. The existing storm pipe has a proposed easement, which is what we require. The question's going to be who owns it and will maintain this pipe. And right now, that's kind of where we're at. Our, our solicitor has contacted the property owners and the township's taking the position that it's not their pipe. I think Steve's, oh, Steve's client has taken the position it's not theirs. Um, that would be, I think it's an issue that just needs to get resolved. Storm pipe's not going away for, at least for now, but, um, when the plan gets recorded, it's good to know who's going to be owning and maintaining that storm pipe. So that's probably the, I'll say, the issue that's outstanding. Everything else can be easily addressed. I think this probably hopefully can be addressed as well, but all the other items contained in the letter are, are basically final plan requirements.
Okay. I guess one other thing, just, um, thinking about here, I know it came up probably the first time we looked at the plan was that the, um, outdoor storage would be going away as part of the improvements to the project. I assume that's still the case, that once the improvements are done or are started, there would be no more outdoor storage at the facility?
I think.
To not have any outdoor storage upon completion of the improvements. You know, in terms of the phasing of this, the initial improvements along 422 at the front of the property would be what I think probably you're most concerned about. There is some parking in this area here, which, you know, this would be where we start, here, here and here. Uh, there is parking back here at the, at the rear of the property. Uh, we are contemplating a building being put there, but that wasn't something, depending on market need, we would do that probably within 12 to 24 months of when we actually start. So eventually, you know, upon completion, there wouldn't be any outdoor storage, but at the rear of the property, given the ability, so we didn't see an issue of actually phasing that out as opposed to.
Man, I know that's something that we did discuss is, you know, that made the project appealing to spruce up that, that area. Would there be something that we could maybe do a note on the plan, um, maybe to that effect?
Set a deadline for the.
Maybe, you know, maybe if it is, you said 18 to 24 months from the time construction started. From that point, then the outdoor storage would, would cease within that 18 to 24 month.
I would suggest a plan note be placed.
Yeah.
And that can be recorded with the follow-up plan.
Okay.
You could make the business decision to figure out how to store them inside or
Right.
Don't allow the storage anymore.
Okay, I can add that note. That won't be an issue. Um, with that is a, I'd like to request conditional or final plan approval condition on the review letter.
Anybody have any other questions or concerns?
My concern is just that pipe, how that's going to be resolved. I mean, I, I mean, I hear, hear what Joe's saying, but I don't know what the next step is. How, how are they going to find out whose it is?
Yeah, so I guess what.
Can't we pretend we didn't find it?
I, I, I think, just my opinion, I, I think it's going to come into a legal, I think it's going to come into a legal issue where our solicitor is going to need to review this against what the law. And at that point somewhere along the line, there's going to need to be, um, a resolution of some sort to determine who owns that pipe. I, I probably would defer it to our solicitor and then if we need to do any more research on properties and so forth, that'd be up to the discretion of the township.
And they are going to put a building over the top of that, correct?
No.
No, we actually slid the building away to be safe.
Okay, thank you. I, I, from the, from the previous meeting, I remember you saying it.
We were on top of it. We, we moved the building away, so we're no longer on top.
They don't have no concerns.
If it's an active pipe, what's it connected to?
Unfortunately, what happened is connected to the 42-inch pipe underneath PennDOT's road. And we have no evidence from any PennDOT drawings that have been, we, we requested copies of the PennDOT drawings, the originals and the jug handle and so forth. And all they do is show the 42-inch culvert that's coming from the assisted care living facility. Originally, it showed as being a ditch, meaning the 42-inch would just discharge into a swale. Somewhere along the line, somebody put a pipe in that's smaller size, uh, it's acting as a constraint, uh, restriction, and piped it down to the creek. Actually, when we even looked at the McDonald's drawings, um, it just shows their proposed storm sewer and from Shellborne Road, but the, the pipe does not show. Right now, we have a problem. If you go by McDonald's, there's a, a partial collapse of the pipe. There's nothing on the plans that show that pipe and it's very deep. So I'm not sure if the intent was to be abandoned at one point, but it does carry water, but there's areas that it's just impaired, that's full of silt and, and not completely passable stormwater. So there's a couple of issues out there, but I think the storm pipe is just, we found a, a subdivision plan or survey plan that has the pipe on, but there's no indication of who installed it or who owns it. So unless we do some title search, which might be the next option and go back and look at who owned it and what was in their deed so to make sure there's any reference whatsoever of the ownership and maintenance. It might carry with the land. It may, it may not. So that's kind of where we're at right now. Um, but based on township records, they never own and maintain it, which would make sense because it's on private property. But PennDOT, PennDOT will only take ownership of the 42-inch pipe. Anything beyond outside their right of way, uh, they're not going to accept ownership of.
So typically, who would have ownership over after PennDOT? Where are the waters flowing?
That's a really good question. Um, it all depends how things are written up and easements and so forth. Typically, PennDOT, unless they acquire the land or easement, once it leaves their right of way, it's not theirs.
Typically, the property owner?
Typically, it really goes to the property owner.
Yeah. So once it leaves the right of, and that, that falls true also with municipalities unless we have a swale and we're taking it now. In Exeter, there are, are situations where we do own the swale, so we may, we've maintained it. We've done improvements. We've gotten actually, PennDOT to help us on Gibraltar. We had a swale that turned into a BMP that was utilized for the, uh, Shellborne, um, 562 intersection improvements. They needed to have a credit for to meet their infiltration water quality, so we were able to negotiate PennDOT to install a BMPs type swale, which helped township and helped them. They meet their credits and, and we got an existing problem corrected, so it worked, it worked out well. But to answer your question, it varies, but typically, once it leaves the right of way, it's typically the landowner.
Is there any way to put a note on the plan that exempt, exempts us from any responsibility for this pipe and that take care of it?
That's the question.
Yeah. I'm not sure how that would hold up. Uh, I mean, typically.
I mean, it's already there. It's already on their property. So we're just saying, hey, Exeter's not responsible for this.
My experience with dealing with drainage easements and so forth, and it, sometimes it varies from solicitors, but most solicitors, unless it's a, a separate recordable document that shows the easement and the pipe, that usually what will hold up in court. Some solicitors feel like if it's on a recorded plan, doesn't necessarily mean the easement's there. I've had, I've seen differences of opinion. Uh, depending upon what you're doing, it works to your favor and sometimes it doesn't work to your favor. But, uh, in this situation, I'm not sure if putting a note on the plan would, would hold, hold up, to be honest with you.
If he wants to go forward with his, with his plans, he has to claim ownership of the pipe and on his plans?
I, I think.
Is that the cleanest way?
I can throw this out. If the planning commission feels that they want to consider recommending conditional plan approval, I would make that one of the, as much as, consider the letter as a condition as well as the storm pipe for determining the ownership and maintenance of the storm pipe, because we, we'll want to see that defined on the plan when it's recorded so that we know it's company X or company B or whatever and so forth.
At this point, the township's saying it's not ours. PennDOT says it's not ours, but. Yeah, the ownership, whatever it's determined at whatever time.
It's a unique situation in their defense. They've done their research and we've done our research and we're, we're, I'll say we're hitting roadblocks here. So we, we might need to do some more and like Will said, I think we need to consult with our solicitor to determine whether or not, if there's any more deed research. If not, then he's probably going to have to look at case law, uh, out there and see where it falls in, uh, with our, with this situation. Out of my jurisdiction a little bit, but.
What if he decided to just tear the pipe up and fill it in?
There's water, there's actually water coming from a detention basin from the, the assisted care living facility. The detention basin does not have a metering device. It's a basin, but honestly, the water probably goes right through the pipe. We just met with Larry before the meeting.
So there again, that's not his property though. So they're pushing water onto his property.
Correct.
This pipe is not.
Correct.
Identified by anybody.
But I believe there's law that you can't block water if you're the downstream property owner. Unfortunately, water flows downhill. I'm not trying to sound funny, but there's, there's laws out there where you can't block if you're the low person in the watershed area. So I, I think, I think if somebody would block that, that could create a, a legal issue. And we had a situation, I won't go into detail, where we had a developer block the pipe and it created a problem on actually PennDOT's right of way. It turned into a legal issue where, uh, this developer got in trouble, not only from the department, but from the township because of that reasoning, because that pipe served a purpose to just take water, discharge it and ultimately get it to the, uh, uh, Skookla River. So I, I, like I said, I, I think it would be something that you, you don't want to do that, but I think it's something we, we definitely need to get clarified or resolved.
I was curious. Thank you.
Hey Todd, I'm with you. I mean, Joe, so to understand this, you have no discharge of the pipe today, none with the proposed condition. It's just a bypass from the basin to the PennDOT right of way.
Comes from the other side of the highway.
And there's no ability to just add an easement that would grant access to it if and when it needs addressed in the future? To such that, it's not really these guys.
No.
Again, where you're going, Joe, I'm just trying to figure out.
No, you know what it is? It, it's, it's a pipe. You're right. It's a pipe that's always been there, but in my honest opinion, I think it's been overlooked. And it, it's very deep. And the fact it didn't even show up on any of the drawings, including the jug handle drawings and, well, that might have been a little out of its limit of work, but on the other plans, it never showed up. And I understand their situation. My guess is somebody probably put it in years ago. The question's going to be whoever owned the land at that time, does that pipe follow the land so that whoever's the current owner might take responsibility? That, that's the part I don't know and that might be out of my wheelhouse a little bit, but it might be in our solicitor. But I mean, I understand Todd's concern. It's kind of a situation where they're not tying into the pipe. It's basically like a utility line traversing their property.
If that makes sense.
Yep, agreed.
If, if, this is coming from the assisted living home. Did anybody look at the assisted living home development? And where that pipe is coming out? I mean, you said it's a swell.
Actually, the pipe was in before, the 42-inch pipe was in before the assisted living facility was developed. So there was always a drainage flow, a drain, a natural drainage course. So when the assisted care facility developed, they put a detention basin in and then they discharged to that 42-inch pipe. That 42-inch pipe also takes what we call bypass area, so even though it's collecting.
We're talking about 27-inch pipe here.
Well, this is the, it goes from 42 to a 27. That's the issue. Somebody put a 27-inch in and they're restricting the flow. The 42 is always in. That shows up on PennDOT's drawing. However, somebody put a 27-inch, which is wrong. But we, we have no evidence of who owns, whoever installed that pipe and looking at the condition, Will and I looked at it. It's been in the ground for quite some time. It's, it's old boilerplate. I call it boilerplate. It's boiler material riveted. It's a, it's a rust bucket. It, it basically is that old pipe material. I've seen it and it's probably 40-plus years, if not more. And that's, that's the issue at hand.
But there was no, no way that that 48-inch you're talking about that feeds that 27-inch? They didn't have that on the drawings for that?
The 42 is always part of the PennDOT road, so it, it's, it's anything that, it collects everything, I'll say, north of 422, including the assisted daycare or not assisted, uh, living facility. So it's not only collecting their water, it's also collecting anything else that flows into that 42-inch pipe. It's a, 42 inches of large size pipe, so it's taken, I don't know the exact drainage area it's taking, um, but I would consider probably a fair amount.
Yeah, I would too.
I mean, and then going to a 27 doesn't help the situation. Now, best to our record, we haven't had any complaints of backwater, um, with this, with this situation.
But you said at McDonald's, it's collapsed.
Yes, it still can flow, it still can flow, but partially flow, but yes.
Well, it's still a problem for the community.
It, it's, it's a problem, yes.
So this needs to be addressed. Whether, whether you go back to PennDOT and say, how did you
Yeah.
attach that 42-inch to the 27-inch? Nobody had to.
They didn't attach it though.
They didn't. They may not be aware of it.
They might, yeah, right. It's only just came along, whoever developed the land.
Yeah, unfortunately, unfortunately, this could have happened, I'll just.
Years ago.
Yes, and, and it could have been put in.
When was the 42-inch put in?
That 42-inch probably is, uh, easement has been there probably longer than.
Yes, the 42 underneath the PennDOT road was probably there when the road was built.
But where did it release to?
Into a swale.
Swale.
So what happened?
An open swale.
Open swale. So my theory is whoever owned that land probably didn't want to have that open swale because that become a problem if you try to develop it. They probably took a pipe, whatever they had
Right.
off the shelf or in the yard and put it in there. Right or wrong as it may be, that's probably what happened. And not to say this the wrong way, it was probably done overnight and nobody probably really noticed it back then and, and it, and I, I think it's one of those things that was out of sight, out of mind. They're not connecting to it. McDonald's never connected to it. The developer of the shopping center doesn't connect to it. It's, it's there, but somebody.
Somebody, if something is done with this pipe, are we going to request, request that it goes a 42-inch completely down the line? I mean, you're talking about a major, a major digging.
It should be.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
In, in theory, yes. If the pipe has to be replaced, it should match the size of the pipe.
If it's crumbled at McDonald's, apparently it needs to be replaced.
The, the question is who, who's responsible to replace it?
Totally agree. And that's what I'm saying. That needs to be resolved.
That's the hard part.
Is the property owner typically required or responsible to replace it?
If it's on their property and there's no other easements or agreements that are written or recorded in the courthouse, I would probably say yes, but. I would probably say yes. But.
So isn't this a situation?
I think that's where we, that's where the area is gray. It's not real well defined.
This almost is like a situation where.
The ownership of the pipe.
Okay. We could, the township could take ownership, repair it properly all the way down through and then, or not, it wouldn't be.
We, we could, but we would have to acquire an easement and property and then we'd be on private property. And then we could be setting a precedent. Because if we fix one pipe for a private entity, we'll be fixing more pipes.
And what would be the cost of that? That sounds like a pretty big.
I put it out there as a hypothetical.
I think I threw, I forgot I threw a number together. It was pretty high.
Have a little more understanding of why.
You're probably talking three quarters of a million to take it from 422 down to the creek with today's prices. Storm pipe is incredibly expensive. You're looking, you're looking at a lot of challenges, depth, restoration, everything, permitting. And if it's over a hundred acres, then you're looking at a permit.
Well, I mean, he wants to improve this property. We're looking to have properties improved along the corridor. And he's faced with a challenge that he shouldn't need to have to.
I totally agree. I think, I think it's a very unfortunate issue. He's trying to develop the property that's there and make improvements to it. And believe me, I don't, I don't. I agree. I don't think anybody's disagreeing. I think we just don't, we don't have the right answer at this point and I wish we did.
Move this forward then. That's what.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I think, like I said, I, like I said, do we, the planning commission consider a contingent approval upon meeting the outstanding items in the October 14th review letter, which includes the storm pipe? That's going to be covered and at the same time, it doesn't slow their process down. And then we can work on our end. And if it goes in front of the board of supervisors, our solicitor will prepare a conditions, a memorandum, I would say of understanding that outlines the conditions of the plan approval. The storm pipe would be one of those. I think it's just one of those things where I, I don't think it slows them down if we take action. And that's to your discretion, how the planning commission wants to proceed. But at the same time, it will allow us to do our, to keep pursuing this since this is turning more into a legal issue and it's kind of like I said, more of out of, out of my wheelhouse, but more looking at it as far as the township protecting us on the ownership and the maintenance of that pipe, that we're not going to be creating a hazard or a problem.
Let's say the property owner updates the pipe, puts in a 42 inch, says I own it. I fixed below my property, what needs to be fixed? What does that do to the person below them downstream from them?
It could possibly cause a backwater problem because not knowing what the full conditions, Steve, you probably have a better idea because you did acquire a utility locating services and tried to camera the pipe and it was impassable. So we weren't even able to get a camera through it. So to answer your question, you probably would create, probably would create a problem, a flooding problem, potentially.
And then there would be no requirement on that property owner unless they wanted to update their property to fix the.
Well, that's, that's the issue. I mean, theoretically, the whole pipe should be replaced. Unfortunately, something happened that got through and, but you're right. What you brought up, Todd, is, is, you're correct. It would improve it. You're putting a new pipe in there. The water's going to flow much quicker. If that 20, if that remaining section of that 27 inch pipe is clogged and is 70% open, yes, you could create a problem that could back up through.
My point is if I'm going to take ownership of this pipe, I'm going to put one in that's proper, that protects my property, but now I've just created a situation for my neighbor. And. Whereas in the situation now, except for at McDonald's, for some reason, there's a big.
I, yes. I think the correct way, hypothetically, if they were going to replace the storm pipe, then whoever owns that remaining section of pipe should do the same.
But there's no requirement upon them to do it. They could just let that whole area.
No. I think the only problem they have right now is they have tenants that aren't happy that this pipe isn't functioning properly. But you're right. I don't know what our legal recourse can be, if we can force them to do it or just force them to fix the pipe.
So two, two questions, you know, I have here thinking about this. So there's no proposed water to go to this pipe from this proposed plan. This existing pipe just, just runs through the property and ownership is unknown.
Yes.
So obviously there, there should be something thought about as far as identifying the ownership and some type of easement, if that's.
Their proposed easement.
Beyond that, it just happens to run under the property again and, and we don't believe it necessarily. I can't say we, we don't believe. We can't confirm whether it goes with the property or not at this point.
But it also goes underneath Shelbourne's road, correct?
It goes down under, onto.
Yes, that's correct.
And that's, that is Exeter Township property, correct?
The road at that point.
Yes. Shelbourne Road is our road up to the jug handle.
So we are responsible for part of it?
I mean, presumably if there was a problem under the road, obviously the township needs the road in service.
Right. The inlets that are on the road do not tie into this pipe. They're collected and discharged into a swell or tie into the system at Pendot 422. Like I said, it's a very unique situation. It's almost like having a gas line go through your property where it's underground, outside, out of mine. This is kind of the same situation, but unfortunately pipes fail and that's when you're going to have the issue somewhere along the line.
No proposed, you've moved things. There's no proposed improvements over top of that pipe. So at any time in the future, that, that area would be accessible, other than paving or.
Yeah, paving's everything. The building was moved to be safe of it.
Yeah, it'd be accessible for repair.
Couple parking spaces in the driveway.
Yeah. All things that it could be replaced at some future date of naming.
And if he declares ownership of the pipe, why would there need to be an easement and why can't he put anything he wants over top of it?
If he declares ownership of the pipe.
Says I own the pipe. He should be able to put anything he wants over top of it and not need an easement. I mean, technically it's his property from wherever on up. And, you know, we're talking about an easement, but we're not going to claim we own the pipe.
I, I, yeah, I understand where you're going with it because it's not a pipe that we maintain.
Fundamentally, I mean, he shouldn't need.
It's really there to protect the property owner so that if a problem does occur, at least the township can come back and say if it's, if it's affecting the health, safety and welfare of the public, we can go back and say, look, you have an easement here. It's your pipe. You need to fix it. It's flooding the road or, yeah. We require, we require per saldo that all utilities have easements. So that would be.
Whether the property owner owns it.
Correct. Yes.
So I, I think at this point, I mean, the ownership of the pipe, we all know that needs to be determined in the future. Probably some agreement has to be reached before the final plan approval by the board of supervisors. Something needs to be identified and worked out. But I, I kind of agree with Joe that it is a, going to be more of a legal and research matter. And from a planning commission standpoint, I don't know, since he's not using that pipe for anything, I don't know that it is necessary, say, for him to come back again just to tell us they got that part of it worked out. I think township staff, the engineer and solicitor would certainly work on that to make sure that gets, that part of it gets addressed.
But that's been on, that's been on, on this plan for a long time.
Right.
And there's nothing been done about it as far as I can see. I mean, you did say you did research.
Yeah, I, I think things have been done with it. It's just in this situation, we just can't find any evidence to date pulling plans from the courthouse going back. The only thing, like you said, pulling deeds and doing a, doing a title search is the only other alternative. But there could be a good chance the title, the deeds are just going to not make any reference to that pipe. So I think things have been done. Our solicitor has rendered a legal opinion to the property owners that the township's position is we do not own and maintain it. So that's where we stand. So right now, that's the position of the township.
So we'd like to ask for conditional approval, condition on a review letter and I guess some sort of resolution of, of that pipe, if there's one to be had.
I mean, if, if we can do something separately by exempting Exeter Township from any maintenance on this pipe going through their property, would that solve that?
Yeah. Well, I think that's probably already been done with the solicitor's letter. The township has stated they don't own or maintain that part.
Legally, I believe.
Our solicitor sent out a letter dated September 15th of this year, basically directing the property owners that the storm pipe is not owned by the township and the township expressly disclaims any responsibility for this pipe. So I think that position has been established.
And it's been proven that Pendot doesn't own it.
Correct.
So it's their pipe. So what do we, what do we need to overcome?
Yeah. Unfortunately, I think it's going to go with, you're right, with the landowner. Like I said, I.
There's no one else stepping up to buy the pipe.
Unless there's some, unless there's some law, unless there's some law out there that I'm not aware of, which is probably something that I think Chad would probably inform us, but it's kind of a.
So I mean, it could be if, if the commission so chooses, it could be a conditional approval with, you know, the item stated in the review letter, everything being resolved to the satisfaction of township staff and the engineer. And that the, we could call out specifically that ownership of that, of the storm pipe be determined prior to final plan approval, whether that means it goes with the property owner or someone downstream claims ownership of it, which is unlikely, but.
I, if I may, so what I'm trying to understand right now, I know we want to know who owns the pipe, but what is the, what are we solving for right now? I mean, we, this pipe has been there. What's, what, what are we trying to?
I think the problem would be for protection for yourself as a property owner. So at some later time, there's a problem downstream, somebody comes back and says, whether it's, hey, we have to replace that, that pipe, we're going to do it, but they need to have access through your property or.
Here's, here's a situation that'll play out if, let's say, for instance, the pipes, let's just say for discussion purpose, we establish the pipe's not yours, but it's somebody else's. If that pipe fails and causes destruction to your property, what's your recourse to get, to get it fixed? I mean, you could take them legally, but if the ownership and maintenance is established on the plan, then that protects you, like Glenn said, that you can go back and say, company B, you need to do this or else, you know, I'll, we'll pursue legal action. If it's not established and something happens, we'll be having the same, this conversation will probably be in court where you're trying to prove who's going to own and maintain that pipe. Let's just say it blocked, it collapses and it, and it makes your driveway impassable or limits your access, then you're kind of stuck trying to.
If, if we never found the pipe and it happened, he'd be stuck dealing with it himself anyhow.
Right. But, but now that, now that the plan's with, in front of us and we have requirements, you want to establish, you want to establish that.
Well, it depends. That's what I'm trying, so that was my next question. You're asking all my questions, by the way. So, I mean, so that, and a lot of what Todd's been saying have been my thoughts. I mean, I, I'm not adverse to owning the pipe unless what makes me nervous is the thought that, you know, I'm going to be compelled by the township to do some work, which doesn't really, and this is something I had an opportunity to speak with Will Bruegger about. I can, even if I take ownership of the pipe on my property, I can't compel McDonald's, the Shelbourne guys to do anything with their pipe. I can't compel the Redding Motorsports people next door to me to do anything with it. Because technically, we think it comes onto their property under 422. So I can't compel them to do anything. So even if I take ownership of this pipe, what, what the township would have to do, and I don't think, and I, you know, Mark Cuck is my land use attorney, so we would have to consult with him and your solicitor. But I don't have the ability to compel anybody to do anything beyond the scope of my property. That's really only comes down to a township, right? And then to the extent we run into a problem, I, I think at that point in time, it could be something where we then, you're right. I'm not saying this doesn't come back, but then at least we know what the problem is we're solving for. Because right now it could be downstream. McDonald's has an issue. It could be upstream. Pendot runs into an issue. And Pendot is the one arguably we think benefiting from this or the, or, and I actually, you know, you were, you were speaking, Mr. Whitman, about the nursing home, which is where Steve and I, last time we were out here, we went and walked all around everywhere. It would appear that it's benefiting them. If their reservoir backs up, then it's much easier, I feel like, for the township to say to them, like, you have to fix this. There's this pipe. You can compel them to do so and say that this is, that they're probably, because we don't, as Steve noted, we don't drain into it. We don't benefit from it. So if at some point, and we've, we've shortened this building, we moved our office back in order to accommodate, you know, the concerns here. So in the future, if this does arise, we've, we've engineered around this, you know, additional expense and time to come back here. So I, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what you guys are suggesting with conditions, approval and solving for this. Because Will's been very kind enough to work with us on this for an extended period of time. I just don't know what, I feel like we're kicking it down the road and I'm happy to have us, the next time I'll have Mark Cuck come and speak with your solicitor and I'm happy to work with you on a solution. But this is something where I, I'm concerned that we're going to do this again in, you know, three, four, six months. And I would really like to close the loop on this.
No, I understand. We, we're not trying to delay this. Actually, we're trying to get this approved. I understand what you're saying and believe me, I wish we knew who owned the pipe, period. Because then, exactly what you said, if there's an issue downstream or whatever, that person would be responsible. And believe me, I understand you have an easement. You, you made the took measures to make sure that things were out of easement and that's a great idea. I, I don't think anybody here is trying to delay this at all. If anything, we're trying to get it approved and not, we're actually trying to protect you. I know it doesn't, maybe it doesn't sound that way tonight. And I think that's why planning commission is looking at approving this tonight with that condition. And then it'll allow us, even if Mark, I know Mark and we dealt with Mark on other issues in the township, that's something that maybe we can have our solicitor contact Mark. And Mark's done a lot of, he represented a lot of shopping centers and so forth. So he's pretty in tune with a lot of things. So that's something that Will and I can definitely share with our solicitor, the situation. But I just, I think we're just trying to get the matter resolved as quickly as possible. Like I said, I don't think there's any other issues with this plan except for just routine final plan requirements.
So if the plan says he owns the pipe, he doesn't have to worry about the pipe anymore? We're not requiring him to do anything with the pipe?
I, I guess in a sense, if, if he takes ownership and then has the easement and the, and the ownership is in there, I'm not sure if we can stop.
I'm sorry, I keep saying the easement.
Easement is, it's a reserved area. You still own the land, but it encompasses enough room that if somebody has to come in there, like a contractor to fix that pipe, they, anything in that area, they'll be allowed to disturb. They'll have to put it back to what it was. But you're not, it's almost kind of like you're giving this property up, but you're not, you still own it. But you're giving rights for that strip, for like a 20 foot wide strip, to come in there and make any, replacing the pipe, fixing the pipe and so forth. It, it gives sufficient area for equipment to get in there, do work. Like we have easements for our utilities.
Right, because there are utilities.
Right, there are utilities. So if the township has to come in and fix something, for instance, we have, we have agreements with some property owners that they're allowed to put a fence in our easement. But if we have to come back and replace the storm line, they're responsible to take that fence down. And we're, and we're not responsible to replace that fence. So it gives prescribed rights for that respective utility company to perform whatever replacement or maintenance when their facility, just like the gas, underground gas has a 50 foot wide easement. It might go through your yard, but they may never need to use it, but it's there to protect them.
But they own, they own the stuff that's under the ground when the easement's put.
Right. They own the actual line.
He owns his pipe here. Fundamentally, I don't know why this pipe is an issue. The owner before him, or many owners before him, dropped the pipe in the ground so they could fill it in. Pipe belonged to that owner, right?
I'm assuming it does, yes.
Sure, he dropped it in there to fill it in and didn't tell anybody about it. So basically, he bought the property, so he bought the pipe. And we shouldn't be all worried about this pipe, other than he needs to claim that it's his. I don't, you're, you're not opposed to it.
No, no, and that's, Todd, you're absolutely right, yes.
Okay. We should have contingencies about this pipe.
Well, I would agree with you, Todd, up until the point, there's a pipe that PennDOT does claim ownership of that ties into it.
That's not our problem, that's PennDOT's problem. And we're putting this guy through all this for a pipe that shouldn't be of an issue.
So PennDOT's passed, and I'm not against, you know, a couple of things, I just, and I'll, like, I know you guys have a lot of other things you wanna do, and I don't wanna take more of your time, but in terms of an easement, typically an easement's granted to the benefit of somebody, I'm not even sure who I'd be granting this easement to benefit. If you grant it to a township for their benefit, even though it's not-
No, it'd actually be to the benefit of the person who owns the storm pipe. So in your case-
That's what, we don't know who that is.
Right, that's what I do, chasing their tail.
That's what I was gonna go with this. So right now, and I'm not against the easement idea, I'm happy to get creative to, to move this forward, so if that's a possibility, that's fine. And the second thing, as long as the, you know, my concern, I just wanna make sure we're not talking about the idea that if I grant easement, that you mentioned construction and other things, I just don't wanna be obligated to the extent that something comes up and you start saying, you know, it looks like this pipe isn't working, right, we have flooding on this property over here, I want you to fix this pipe because you granted an easement, because you own it, now I seem to be doing, and I understand that you guys didn't put the pipe in either, but I don't wanna be doing something to benefit the nursing home, PennDOT, or somebody else, because I've now put up record the fact that I have this easement to a greater party out there, whoever wants to come on and do dozers and start-
If you take ownership of the pipe, and, and, let me make sure I, I understand you correctly, you're really just granting the easement to yourself, because you're, you're accept- and, and, like I said in my review letter, if you came out and said, okay, I'll own and maintain the pipe, I feel I do, I tend, I, I agree with Todd, I don't know if we can stop you, I think we just, the position always been was, you didn't and we didn't, so that's where the stalemate came in.
And that's the way I know.
But if, if you decide that, then that's, I'm not saying that's a wrong thing to do.
So question is-
Because that, just to, just to add on to what Todd said, the position that they always taken was, it wasn't our pipe, they felt it was ours. So that's where we're at. So if they're gonna take the position it is their pipe, then maybe things are different. And I'm not saying that's wrong, I, I'm, I mean, the easement, to answer this gentleman's question, would be the easement would really be just there to protect him so that if he ever sells that, or whatever, that nobody builds, nobody puts anything in there, just, but it's gonna be granted to him because it's gonna be his storm pipe.
Yeah.
And it's now showing on plans, I mean, that's the good thing. Now, have a record, this is getting recorded.
I don't know what you feel, Will, if that's just running something by, running up the flagpole with Chad on that, but, you know, that's, that's a different situation, what we're looking at than what we did before.
I think if we run this by the solicitor, if the planning commission would like to give conditional approval tonight, we'll run this by the solicitor and try and have something worked out by the time it goes to the board of supervisors.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
You're in agreement with that?
I, yeah, I mean, I'm-
Okay, okay. I just want you to understand where we're coming from. We weren't trying to, it's just that we knew you didn't want the pipe and we didn't have it, but if that's, if that's the case, then I think that probably would be the way to go.
One more scenario, just-
Yeah, sure.
I think it's more, I agree with everything you've said, but I think the reverse is, if that pipe is ever replaced, it's not likely because anything you wanna do, it's because there's something upstream or downstream that needs the whole system done. So I think that's the only scenario in my eyes, that that pipe gets replaced. So an easement in favor of, and I don't know if it's the township or whoever to have access to it for a bigger project in the future, probably isn't a bad idea, but I don't think you, for any reason, would ever have to touch that pipe.
And Eric, my thoughts are this, exactly the same as your, is there a way to put an easement in place? Now, a lot of times you name, specifically name the utility that has that easement, but to put that in place, that then, somebody, somebody in the future can replace that pipe someone.
Eventually.
And then the other thing it does, is it protects you that, as part of the replacement, they would have to restore your driveway, they would have to restore your lawn, so, so all those things would have to be restored at no cost to you, the property owner.
Something like that, right, and then dealing with the, when we encounter an issue as opposed to right now, which I'm not, I know, maybe it's McDonald's, brought this to everybody's attention, but I think that seems like a sensible solution as opposed to us trying to figure, you know, solve for this today, figure out who owns it and who has to maintain that.
So from the planning commission, would, would everybody, does everybody's thoughts align with sort of that, that we would do a conditional approval with a recommendation that, of, of an easement for future replacement of that pipe, by some entity to be identified or-
If you wanna add to that easement, that the property owner will accept responsibility of the storm pipe, provided that an easement be provided, just what you just said, Glenn, subject to review from our solicitor, and I think that just, that'll cover us, or at least most part.
Not to parse language here, but when you say responsibility, I, I'll, you know, I'll take, I'll acknowledge ownership of it, it's on my property, as Mr. Arnold noted, but there's still, just because, no obligation for me to do anything with this pipe other than own it, at this point. And then to the extent you're granting this easement, to the extent I'm doing this easement, we come up with an easement idea.
No, 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 I don't think we are. I think, I think the easement idea is, okay, if, if your neighbors have a problem anywhere in the area and somebody wants to address that pipe, it'll be the township or it'll be PennDOT, it'll be some government entity that has to take care of all the property owners.
Right.
Unless you all get together and say, let's fix the pipe.
Correct.
And that'll never happen.
It's gonna be very challenging.
So, it's just the same as us making a big deal about a pipe that's under your ground, I mean, geez.
I, I, yeah.
I was just gonna say, I really think it's a legal issue at this point.
I think it is, too. I, I think, I'll, I'll, I'm gonna put my two cents in here, I think that it is a legal issue.
Absolutely.
I think at this point, before we get too far into this, because I think there is a little bit of a disconnect here, I, I think the best thing to do is have our solicitor and their solicitor review this, see what the best approach is. Before, because his concern is maintenance responsibility and ownership, that means you own the kit and caboodle. If it fails, you're responsible to replace it. So I don't want that, I don't wanna be, anybody be misled, like just granting an easement doesn't waive that fact. So I think we're at a point where my recommendation would be is, if the planning commission agrees, make the motion subject to a review and approval by our legal counsel, with their legal counsel.
To come to an understanding.
Makes any sense. Then, then everybody's on this, then we're, then we're covered legally because it, it is, it's a, it's a unique situation, and I, I wish it, I wish it was simpler than this, I really do.
The only thing that adding easement would do would allow you to have somebody pay for your pavement and sidewalk and grass, if you were worried about that, if somebody wanted to come in and tear up the pipe, other than yourself.
So-
That's all it would give you.
Yeah.
And that might not happen for a hundred years, so.
It's been a long time since it's been there.
If the pipe is already crumbling at McDonald's and then something happens down there where they have to replace that, then somebody's gonna come back up the line and say, what's, where's the rest of the pipe go? That's, that's my concern, and that's gonna, that's gonna, if he claims ownership of it, he's gonna be responsible for it.
We're gonna go around and around, can we just-
Yes.
Let the solicitors agree?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Work a legal agreement out.
We could ask the solicitors, though, to minimize, there's been the fees.
Right. They're the ones, they're the ones that are gonna protect both of us, so let's, let's just defer to that.
Thank you for the time.
With that said, do I have a motion to recommend conditional approval on the plan, again with all items in the letter being resolved to the satisfaction of township staff and the engineer and the solicitor, including the matter of the utility, storm utility that's unknown, has unknown ownership?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Have a motion by Jeff, second by Les. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Okay, last item on the agenda is the town center overlay zoning district. Will, you wanna give us a little background on this?
This language has, we've seen this language several, several times now, so for you tonight is a paper copy, we had a potential developer review the language and redline the overlay district, providing some feedback and some comments. If you guys, I don't believe I, I think I only received comments from one planning commission member on the original draft language, but if we would like to talk about for tonight, the comments from the potential developer, we can quick go through those, staff did have that conversation today. And we can try and get your thoughts if you guys would like.
Okay. And Will, you're not looking for any specific action tonight, it's a discussion with comments and-
We can see where the conversation goes and-
You're talking about the redline document, right?
Yes, that is the redline document from the potential developer.
Okay.
This is just a copy of his comments, and then you can also hold on to that, we'll address that later.
And then, Will, just so we understand, this second document is something that was prepared by?
Yes, so the second document, which is the two-page document with the Excel table, was a, think about it as a condensed version of section, I think, six in the draft language. And with this two-page document, what we did was really combine all of the townhome condominium and multifamily buildings as, as well as additional non-residential uses that would be permitted under, through the conditional use process as one group of uses, and then the independent living, the assisted living, and the mega religious institutions as a separate, as a second grouping of uses.
Okay. Joe, I don't know if you wanna chime in on this?
Sure, sure. As Will said, several years ago, there was some discussion about creating this township commons overlay district to allow for certain areas of the township to become more, I'll say, developed, where we'd have mixed uses, where commercial properties could be developed with a combination of residential, you started to see this more towards King of Prussia area. So the township had Simone Collins, as Will said, prepare this, a draft document. Chris Falenke from McCarthy Engineers has a client that's looking at developing a building into an apartment complex, which kind of initiated the whole process, and I know the township's been looking to bring back this overlay district because they've been trying to, being strong push to get more commercial, commercial retail business establishments within the township. So the revisions that are noted in red were, were a combination of provided by Chris Falenke, as well as Will and I looked at some of the revisions that Chris did, and some of them we, we had shared with Chris, others he, he provided, and tonight we'd like to just run through it if we can, highlight those red areas and get an idea of what the planning commission's thinking, we'll give, give you our opinion of what we think, if that's, if everybody's in agreement, and I'll, I'll try to keep it fast for everybody, but if we look at the document that McCarthy put together that has red, high, red, red changes in it, under definitions, we are looking at redefining our definition for condominium being a little more specific. I think their definition does address, I think it's a little more specific, and both Will and I feel like it's, it's adequate, but we're, we're open for comments as well. Also, under definitions, under the second page, we have no definition for a low-rise building or a mid, mid, mid-rise building. Obviously, we're not gonna have high-rise buildings, but we need to establish the definition. So in this case, a low-rise building is either a residential or mixed-use structure that has a maximum of two occupied floors. The mid-rise building, their definition that they provided was a residential or mixed structure, having more than two occupied floors to a maximum of five occupied floors. Our concern with having five, we do have building height restrictions, we like to determine, we, I believe we're looking at floors being the maximum, but we're gonna double-check our zoning and saldo, but that's what we were looking at, so we're consistent with our ordinances so that we don't exceed our maximum building height.
Yeah, that's, on the second page there, it says right there, forty-five feet.
Forty-five feet, yes.
Is it right there?
So, we, we could stick with the forty-five or determine, that probably would be the most consistent, I'm trying to think what a typical floor is, about thirteen feet, twelve feet, fifteen, so you're probably really looking at only three, three feet.
Yeah.
And you get your ace and-
Can you have an occupied floor underground?
Yeah, you can.
I mean, my feeling, the mid-rise, I mean, I'm thinking about the township, and five stories is a tall building.
What about-
You think about the areas that could go into.
What about two or more up to, or an up to the height allowed under the ordinance, or whatever it may be? Something where it's above two, but up to whatever's permitted?
So not base it off of occupied floors, just go up to maximum?
Not to exceed the-
Maximum building height.
Right, building height.
Yep. The occupied floors becomes-
It would be better that way, because it would be more consistent with our zoning.
Yeah.
So we're not confusing the situation.
Public comment?
Yes.
Yeah, Ted Yardal, two-one-eight Pennsylvania Avenue. So I think part of the redlining is also directing your attention to the height bonuses. So if it's a, if it includes two of the usable open areas, it would actually be a sixty-five foot max rather than a forty-five foot max. So I think if you look at the additional, the bonus, and then look at what those usable open areas are, they could access the additional height bonus by putting those in for a residential area. So I think that's where they look at the mid-rise of five floors. So I think, I think you have to include that.
But keeping it to the maximum height doesn't limit the number of floors.
But if-
Zoning height is-
Right, so sixty-five foot would allow more usable floors than the forty-five foot would.
Yeah, we're not deter-
We're not determining that, we're just saying you have to follow the regulations as they are.
Right, but if you look at section eight-
The height bonus section.
That, that's where they get a height bonus. So if they include two of those usable amenities, then they can go to sixty-five foot, not forty-five feet.
Right, but a thirteen feet of floor, it still limits you-
Five.
To five.
Right.
So-
Which would fit right in with their mid-rise definition.
Yeah.
So I think, I think as they redlined it, they were looking at the entire document, not just that section. Thank you.
Okay, makes sense.
Yep.
And it would actually, I know we're gonna talk about, not to jump ahead, but section ten actually would take it even higher, if you did the additional bonus.
I think they were talking about removing that additional bonus.
Agreed.
That, that's a discussion I'd like to have tonight.
Yep, yep. Oh, we got to ten, we're done.
So what would the planning commission, based off of the comments that are very valid?
I'd just leave it as is.
Leave it as is?
Hmm. Cause it gets-
Well, you could, you could limit it to five, and say, up to the maximum building height, add that in there as a stipulation, not to exceed the maximum building height.
Yeah.
You could say five and not to exceed the maximum building height.
Okay.
Double, double coverage.
Okay.
Good thought.
And Will, not to confuse things, but I guess that language is gonna be dependent on what we do with section ten?
Right.
Exactly. So it takes into account all of, all the stipulations, period. You can't go over five, but you can go as high as you want, but you can't go over five stories. That limits you.
Yep, okay. Joe, if you would like to move on?
Sure. Moving under section five, unless anybody has any questions, under definitions. Section three and four, just statements. We didn't really find anything that was different or needed to be modified in those. But under permitted use, number two, apartments and townhouses, apartment buildings shall meet the following requirements. One or two-bedroom units must comprise at least eighty percent of the total residential areas. We're not objecting to that one. Number B, the original was fifty percent of all units must provide outdoor balconies. I don't think we're opposed, they're proposing thirty percent. I don't know if we're opposed to that. If it's a mixed unit, you're going to have commercial properties down below, whether or not we need to have fifty percent of balconies.
Why do we have to have balconies at all?
We don't, we don't necessarily have to. Actually, this was, came from the standard, standard template.
We're not going to limit them to putting balconies in, but I don't think we have to require that they're going to put balconies.
I would, I don't want to speak on behalf of Simone Collins, but my guess would be is balconies make it a little more aesthetically pleasing.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Right.
And it could also be...
I think, so you're not looking at a face wall, like a city wall, or a city building, yeah.
Is it some character?
Ingress, egress.
Yeah.
But then your HOA has to limit what's on the balcony.
Yeah.
Or else it looks like...
That's true, that's true. That's right.
I mean, we're not, we're not saying we can limit, we're not going to limit them to thirty percent, but why do we say anything about balconies at all?
We, we want them in the plans because we want it to aesthetically...
Because we might not put any balcony, and if they were not putting any balconies in, period.
They could throw up a straight-line building.
Yeah, it'll look like a cookie cutter building. I think...
You're going to go...
So, balconies, it'll, it'll soften the building up, make it look a little more aesthetic.
Example, if you look at some of the older apartment buildings that they used to put up, they were just big rectangular boxes.
Looked like hospitals.
Very attractive, yeah.
How's the planning commission feel thirty versus fifty? I mean, I, I have no real opinion. Will and I are thinking, well, maybe thirty is a compromise, but it's up to the planning commission.
I'm kind of, my, my own opinion, I might compromise and say forty.
Yeah, why did they change from fifty? You know, I guess they don't want to spend the money for fifty percent, but...
They may have...
I think forty's a good compromise. Does anybody have any?
They might have a reason for wanting a third of the unit to only...
One thing what we're going to do, after we have our discussion this evening, Will and I are going to have a conference call with Mr. Filenki just to kind of review some of the issues that he had. He did request it, and to provide him the common courtesy, we'll discuss some of these issues. And we might divulge into some of the reasoning, since he's dealing with developers who build apartments and so forth. We had some open discussion when Lorraine Nursery was being looked at from Metropolitan. They, they did, they do a lot of more higher-end apartments and so forth. And some of those items, we're going to try to keep, keep in this ordinance.
Joe, on that though, real quick, would the thirty percent possibly because do first-floor walkouts, are they considered balconies? Because under the scenario of three floors, the first floor not being considered a balcony, you couldn't get forty percent?
That's a good, that's a good question. That might, might be true. And that's...
The floors, but I thought...
I mean, we can stick, stick with the thirty, if that, or go with the forty, and we could find out.
I don't know if a walkout would be considered a balcony or not.
Yeah, that's, that's a good question.
So could that be simply amended, rather than just saying balconies? Could it say balcony or patio, and that would address the walkout situation?
The balcony's in there for the aesthetics. The walkout's always going to be there because you got to get out of your place somehow.
Yeah.
I think you're getting it.
I mean, we could keep the forty, and then when we have our conversation, this is just going to be a draft. We just want to clean up this draft, and we can revisit again. But the, the next comment is outdoor, originally it was long-term, and it was reworded to be outdoor, indoor, bicycle, parking, storage in the building or in the parking structure shall be provided for at least, they're, they're suggesting ten percent of the total unit. I'm going to just jump ahead to D.
No, 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 no. I want to say something about C there.
Okay, before I, can I just, let me finish my train here. I just want to, here's what we were thinking, and then I'll... We were thinking about agreeing to eliminating D, but keeping fifteen percent for C. The reason B is, it's addressing the outdoor, indoor bicycling. Bicycling is very popular. A lot of these apartments, a lot of active people are using it. We found this out from us dealing with some developers. So please chime in, I didn't mean to cut you there, but what you were going to say.
Well, no, when, when I say outdoor, now the bicycle is in the weather. So it should at least say covered outdoor. You know, outdoor covered or covered outdoor. I would want that covered, so that it's not exposed to the weather. I mean, that's, that's the reason for the indoor, but if you have it outside, then at least they're covered. Like, I don't know, like a three, a lean-to, I'm not, I'm not saying a lean-to, but a three...
Nah, I guess, I guess we probably need to find what's considered indoor. Is indoor being a facility that has a roof?
Yeah, right, just for...
And outdoor is just like a park where you have the bike racks where you come in? I mean, to me, the outdoor would be more for people who are out for a bike ride, want to stop home, take a rest or something, and then go out again.
Well, it's to lock your bike up too, if you go to a retail store. That's your outdoor.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah.
Most people that ride bikes are not going to leave their bike outside in the weather if they're avid riders or even recreational riders. They're going to find a way to park them in their apartment or whatever, or the indoor storage that's provided.
Yeah, but still limiting it, ten percent.
Well, fifteen's fair.
Even fifteen percent, I mean, storage out there and just have parking. I mean, if you got, if you got ten apartments, that's one, that's one spot.
Here's the challenge with the overlay, though. You don't have a lot of places to go riding this bike outside of the overlay that's like trails and accessible. You've got to ride through other communities. So, you know, as much as we like, I bike, you know, but I don't see how it's an attraction or something that you want to deter from the development. You know what I'm saying? You're going to put up bike racks for the sake of having bike racks that aren't going to be used, because you're not going to have a lot of biking going on in that confined community area, because you can't get outside of it to really truly have a bike ride of several miles. So getting too focused on bikes and bike racks could deter somebody from wanting to develop and just put bike racks up for the sake of putting bike racks.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that if you have ten buildings, ten, ten apartments, fifteen percent is one.
Yeah.
Yeah, one.
And out of all those people, I imagine you would, I mean, again, you're going to...
I mean, I don't know.
You're going to keep your bike with you unless you're out riding around and using an outdoor bike rack.
Okay.
So, not to labor the point, but on that, no. And this is really just a general comment. If, if there are provisions here, and I don't know where else it may be called out in our, in our ordinances, but I think that's something that, you know, bike parking, we should have some, some type of parameters for that. Like, maybe it's a screened area. It's an area that's not, what my fear would be is they had, they overbuild the parking lot by four parking spaces, and they get a metal bike rack and set it out, and there's our bike parking. And there's, you know, it's just a bike rack in the parking lot. May not be aesthetically pleasing, may not be safe. People walk in, you know, where's that area at? So I think we should think about that in some, some way.
How does the planning commission feel about the percentage? I know Todd expressed some concerns. Do we just stick with the fifteen for now? And just as a...
I mean, that, that's one, one, okay, it's, it's three spots for every twenty buildings or dwelling apartments. I think that's, at fifteen percent.
It feels light.
It feels okay. I mean, three, three for, for, you know, for twenty.
Three for twenty units?
Yeah, because what Todd said, they're not going to leave them there. It's just going to be temporary parking.
Right.
So I'm okay with that. But ten's light, fifteen, it gives me that half a percent, five percent.
Although I, I do think, because it does word in your indoor storage, okay? So there would be, do you think there would be more people, though, that would own bikes? Not necessarily that they're going to put them outside, but in storage, locked storage area.
So here's, here's the thing. At some point, you have to trust the business is going to want to attract people to live there and take care of something like this on their own, if in fact, it's marketing their, their property. And they're going to want to do it in a, in a way, in a manner that allows them to attract the people that will ride bikes, that will, we want in the community.
I, I agree. I think more developers with apartments are trying to provide more amenities to attract people, because that's really what sells. And I mean, we've heard it already here, that the more amenities you provide, the more marketable you're going to make that apartment complex.
But you also, by adding this, you protect that they're wanting to, like the balconies and the bike park. And you're adding stuff that doesn't, you get somebody who is going to care. And like, like Metropolitan, those, those apartments are nice over there on Lorraine Road. And they're well-maintained, and they're taken care of, and it's a good community.
All right, we'll keep fifteen percent, and we'll try and get some language for addressing bike parking.
Aesthetics.
Aesthetics, yeah.
Item, item F, lowercase F, apartment buildings with more than ten units and less than thirty dwelling units shall incorporate one or more of the below common amenities. Our recommendation is to eliminate that and just say with less than thirty. I think any type of apartment complex that comes in here, I think it's going to be beneficial for the township to have them provide amenities. If, just because it, it makes it more marketable, just like we're saying. The problem is if you get a unit that's ten units, and then it just turns into something. The going trend, like you said, pool, a fitness room, bike, whatever, whatever, common space room, a computer room. I mean, a lot of these apartments nowadays really do offer the, the client a lot of amenities. I, I don't think I want to have something, at least my recommendation is not to have something lower than make them put it in, period. That's my two cents.
So what, what you're...
Our, our ordinance originally said less than thirty, less than thirty units. They're putting in there more than ten, less than thirty. Get rid of the ten, just say less than thirty. That means whatever they're doing, they ju, they need to address it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Basically, we're keeping what we originally had.
Yep.
So you're just getting more than ten?
Glenn, if I could, just a general question. I have a client who does a lot of these apartments, and a big thing I'm seeing they're adding to their plans is dog runs. Is that something we would want to consider as use with these?
We could.
I've seen it on a lot of plans. And I don't know if that would fall under the common open space, but...
That's probably a good idea.
There is, I believe in the SADO, common open space is actually defined. So we could even...
Span on it.
Dog run in, as a definite, as an amendment to that definition.
Well, and one thing, to Todd's point, our earlier discussion, another item is walking or biking trails. We see a lot of those on plans now.
Yes, very popular.
And people use them.
They do, they do use them.
And people are using them, so maybe that is an item we could add to that.
On F, number one, landscape common denominator, on the rooftop? I said this last time, and I'll say it again, on, on the rooftop? What does that mean? How, you got, you got a chair and a bush and a pot, is that...
Just based on the comment I just had for Eric, if you go to the SADO, it's, it's defined what, it's like a certain size, and it's defined in the SADO section.
I don't think it was, but I'll go look, I'll look it up again.
Okay.
Not, not on the rooftop. It's not defined on the rooftop what it is. I, I, I don't think, you know, how do you get access to the roof? So I just think that should be just eliminated, or the rooftop. I'm just thinking it should be eliminated.
Oh, no, that's one of the neatest places to hang out, on the rooftop.
That is the new thing.
Oh, my God, yeah.
It is.
Especially, especially up there where the property that, you know, is involved, the, the old promenade, you could, you could have a nice little lookout.
Oh, most swimming pools are up high now, because you get a great view, and then you have that open area where you can hang out and lounge and...
Yes.
It's, you're right, it's, it's, it's pretty popular.
This is written, it could even be a rooftop restaurant, like, like not completely open, but you know what I mean? They could have a rooftop area.
I'm wondering too, does that mean like green root? Nah, I guess that's more just, never mind, never mind.
They would incorporate that for, yeah. It could qualify for all that.
Yeah.
They did it properly, and then, and usually they do.
That's true.
Be cool. I might want to live there.
So you guys are okay with removing the minimum of ten units?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. Just moving down to item number two, where it begins retail uses to include the following. Next to pharmacy, we did add excluding marijuana dispensaries.
And I'm against that.
Excl, excluding them?
Yes.
You want them there?
I don't want them excluded. Not that I necessarily want them there, but I don't want them excluded, because you're excluding a whole section of business in today's environment.
And yes, you are.
That's, that's up to the planning commission.
So that, we would have to...
So...
Because we do have areas that we've zoned.
We have areas that are zoned, that are specific for dispensaries, and they have to be so many feet away from certain buildings and establishments.
We also have other requirements.
So we need to look, we need to look at the zoning. Schools is one of those, yes.
Yeah, we have some things with schools that are in there, I know.
We can, we can take it out because it's going to have to meet regular, it's going to have to meet the zoning restriction anyway.
Right.
So we'll...
We'll remove it.
Okay.
Going, moving forward to item number four, professional and business office uses. We added insurance companies. They're pretty much low-impact. There's nothing in there. I don't see them being an issue. They would take up relatively small spaces and so forth. So we just added that as a permitted use.
How about, would we, would we want to add in there too, I'm thinking, tax or accounting, professional?
Do we, do we have to specify each and every business?
That was my question as well.
That's, that's my question. Why do we have to specify insurance? Because that's professional and business office, right? Lawyers, lawyer, law.
Why can't you just say professional and business office?
Right. Why do we have to specify everything?
Yeah, I was going to say, is there anything that you would want not to be included, rather than try to name them all?
Can we just include a definition of professional office with...
Kind of like what you were thinking about the marijuana.
Same thing.
Let's exclude.
I mean, we can keep it real general, just say professional, professional and business offices. And then exclusions, we can have a list of exclusions, if we can think of any.
Yeah. Off the top of my head, though.
Although, I, the only, I, I, the only thing I could say, the logic was behind, and I, I didn't, like I said, we didn't write this. Then you're going to be allowing restaurants, which could have high volume of people.
It's not a professional business office?
Well, I'm just saying if we eliminate all these and just say...
I was thinking size, yeah.
Size, because you have coffee shop here that's allowed, food services. And then I'm, I'm talking in addition to professional office. Professional office, I'm not worried about. It's going to be the other ones. If you're, just do a blank, I, I, I'm not just talking out loud or thinking out loud here. The only logic I could think is you want to probably have very minimal-impact businesses that are not going to be creating a bar where you're going to have transient people at hours and different stuff.
Low-impact.
Yeah.
Low-impact professional office.
Why don't you just put that in there?
Because we do have low-impact defined.
Yes, we do.
We could, we could do that. We could, we could take from our definitions what we have and incorporate it. And, or, or like we say, just exclude, maybe that's something you and I could look at. All the, all the permitted uses that we have under the township commons district, see which ones may not be applicable, and those, we could cross-reference what the permitted uses are per township commons, with the exception of... And those, we could cross-reference what the permitted uses are per Township Commons, with the exception of one, two, three, four, five. Just drawing that out.
Ted, you have a...
Yeah, so I think the problem in that number four is to include the following uses and no others. If you're going to expand the uses, you have to get rid of the and no others. I think that's why they were adding the insurance, because they wanted specific things in there. But you could, you could address it by just simply saying.
Right.
Right, and, and I'm thinking about this, maybe the reason that there's specific one called, ones called out is because they're looking for specific types of businesses that complement residential living of, or services that people need. It's like, as I read this, like business office, let's just say, it could be anybody with a business office that has, they, they may, maybe they don't even deal with the outside public, business to business, but this would allow that use. Could be.
Yeah.
Yeah. So...
I think the word low impact would, would stop it.
Yeah, yeah, you could say low impact, um...
We'll work up some type of language for that.
Like tax, tax preparer, or law, you know, law office?
Yeah.
I would say if there is a way we could work in there that...
I'd say we, we look at our...
Public, the pub, where the public is the end user of those.
We look at our uses and determine if, if all of them are, work well in this situation, then maybe we just reword it and say low impact businesses as outlined in section so and so. If there's certain ones we don't want in there, then we just say with the exception of, you know, taverns, bars, or whatever. I know, I'm just, I'm just saying this. I know, I, I mean, it's, bad, sorry, bad example, bad example.
I'm the drink on the roof, trying to think of something, so...
Yeah.
The, the firm that's across, or I don't know if they're still in there, but like, they don't, they're business to business.
Right.
They don't provide services to the public.
I, I think it's probably, was written so that if you're gonna have residential living there, it's gonna be businesses that are gonna be quiet and...
Right.
And, and fulfill people's needs.
We could, we'll look at it, yeah.
Definition of personal services is defined in our zoning ordinance, and maybe that'll fit perfectly.
Yep.
There we go, yeah.
Can I ask one more question on, and it's just semantics, maybe, but reading it. Five A, one, if you read, it says that these uses are permitted as conditional uses, but then in one, we list permitted uses in the Town, Township Commons District. So it's almost saying that permitted uses require conditional use, the way it's written.
Gotcha.
I don't know if it's just some clarity that could be provided in, in number one?
Yep.
That it's a conditional use not required?
I'll, we'll look at that, and I, I wanna say that...
They, yeah, do they...
Yeah, yeah, we'll look at that.
Make sure they, you know, when you compare them, what are you allowing them there?
Yep.
Maybe it's as simple as just taking that out.
Yeah.
All right, what else you got?
Just to add on to what Eric's comment. It's all right, I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you about it later. He brought up a good point, but I just wanted to chuck something in our overlay districts.
That, I think that's how it is.
I think that's how it's written, that's where I was, that's where I was going, yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we need to look at that for consistency. Um, mov- moving along under item number seven, mixed uses, um, seven, lowercase a. It says office use or retail business shall be located on the first floor versus same floor. We're in agreement, I think when you, we, we want the businesses to be on the first floor. If you say same floor, I think that just leaves, um, room for argument, that somebody's gonna say, oh, we're gonna have it on the second floor, but we're gonna have all businesses on the second floor. I think the intent of the mixed use is to have businesses on the first floor with apartment and residential living on top. If, if nobody objects, I, I would... Right here, seven A. Seven A.
I have a question. Are we, are we really trying to make sure that we don't have, like, bars, restaurant, taverns in this area?
We're over here.
The underlying zoning district, the Township Commons, I, does, I do believe allows for taverns and bars.
Okay.
Yeah.
Maybe not bars, but taverns.
Understood, okay. It was me, and that's, all your retired people like to drink, all your young people like to drink.
All the people in between are raising kids and have to drink, so...
All right, hold on.
I know, it's good.
This is geared more towards the residential side.
I got you. Okay. Sorry.
Yeah.
We're worried, man.
Yeah, this would, would, yeah.
Not allow for, though, um, like we talked about a rooftop establishment, this would not allow for, under number seven, some of the things that are called out there. Um, 'cause it does say no floor may be used to hold and park.
But if you're living on those middle floors, you're not, a lot of people walking, if, if you're living in those middle floors, you're gonna want a lot, a lot of traffic going up and down outside your front door, going up to that restaurant.
No, they drag the elevator, you wouldn't see them. And I'd live on the third floor, so I could go up to the bar upstairs.
Probably fifty percent of the people in the building that you attract to live there will be... They'll be wanting the rooftop bar.
You just have to think about how West Reading did what they did, it's amazing. Not that we wanna be West Reading, but...
What's next?
Do we wanna discuss, uh, section six, the area yard and height regulations? Uh, we'll put together, when we looked at this, it's, we tried to make it a little more simpler, um, a little bit confusing the way it was set up into three different columns, um...
Well, if you want, if you want some input, the lot size, the lot area.
That's something we definitely...
It's, it's kinda backwards.
Well, that's something we definitely wanna discuss, because we're not sure what, how, what the intent of the author was when they wrote those lot sizes, and that, it's a good question. I think what we need to do is define, are we looking at pad sites? 'Cause I agree, I think some of these need to be definitely, definitely changed.
It's the townhouse condominium is twenty-five hundred square feet, but yet the non-residential building includes those with, with turn, multifamily is five thousand square feet. It seems backwards. And then, when you went four acres and up to twenty thousand square feet, well, four acres is a hundred and seventy-four thousand square feet. So that, that's dropping it down to not even an acre, it's a half an acre, twenty thousand square feet, a half an acre.
I think we're, I think that's definitely open for discussion, because, uh, what we, what we're trying to do is you have non-residential buildings, including those with multifamily, um, and then you have independent living, and then you have the separate column for townhouse and condominium. Try to do is combine all the residential and the non-residential into one column, and then the independent living facilities, retirement communities, mega-religious institutions and so forth, in another, another column. I'll just kinda go behind, I'll go over the logic first, and then...
Well, but then it says multifamily buildings at the top, at the very, very top, it says multifamily buildings, and this is multifamily units. Tell me the difference. Building depth, you're talking about a building depth, yeah.
I, I'm not, I'm not talking about this, I'm talking about the one that Will just did.
Multifamily buildings?
Yeah.
Oh, this one doesn't...
No, it doesn't say. That's what I was saying, this one we're trying to, if we just refer to the one that Will distributed.
Two pager.
You basically have residential column in it.
I'm not just, I'm not gonna disagree with you on this, that's the reason why Will tried to do, there's issues with this, and we're just trying to streamline it and get some feedback from everybody, because there are, there are issues that, um, we need to discuss. And I just wanna go quickly through this, and then we can go back and look at these maybe a little bit more carefully. Building height, we just added a forty-five feet in there, I know we had that other provision for bonus. Impervious coverage, how, how do people, how do we feel about impervious coverage? Because residential were, were less than, or have eighty-five percent, or not, and then eighty percent. Building length came from our discussions when we were discussing with Metropolitan. A lot of their units are two hundred feet, I think ours was a hundred and sixty, we felt, well, let's just go with two hundred, 'cause that seems to be the, the norm.
Yeah.
Um, building depth, same thing. Lot size, yes, that's definitely open for discussion, um, we're trying to figure out how we wanna address this. Building setback, try to stay consistent with both of these, the same as street line lot width, went with a little bit larger for the, um, independent living facilities and so forth. And then at the setback lines, same way, um, open area, um, percentages should be the resultant, well, eighty-five percent minus the hundred, get you to fifteen for open area, they should add up to a hundred. Then the side yard requirements, um, pretty much sticking with what standard zoning. Rear yard, little more flexibility with the residential, and improvement setback, uh, distance between buildings and distance between access points. Distance between access points, we're staying consistent with what our zoning ordinance allows. Chris Falenke prepared, and his was very, I'll say confusing, because it gave different distances for driveways and intersection streets, which we felt was too close. I think he was proposing, Will, like a hundred or something, between a, a, a public street. Safety-wise, I don't recommend that, our ordinance says one fifty, um, I think it actually goes with collector, I looked at it. So some of this can be tailored, um, it's definitely, um, open for discussion, but we just wanted to get something down, so the planning commission has some time to digest this.
Do we?
And then go back and let's, you make it, improve it.
What's the open, in this, in this defined area, what's the open area that can be developed today? Total acreage, square footage, whatever you wanna call it, and then when you sit down to try to develop it in a manner that maximizes its use and, and attractiveness, this could be very difficult to just arbitrarily...
It is.
Do what you're doing here, because you almost have to look at it when somebody comes in and says, this is how I can develop it and make it work.
Yes.
So if you, if you put this down on paper now, you've basically killed yourself potentially, 'cause we didn't plot it out to see what a community could look like on the open areas.
You're correct, this is probably the, one of the most important things we need to define, because you're right, we gotta look at, this is gonna have an effect, and that, and that, and that's why even we took some of Metropolitan's feedback with the building, just because it's the norm, um, and we may need to look at this a little more carefully, making sure we're not shooting ourselves in the foot by limiting to something that somebody might be able to do, something really good, and they can't, because they gotta get a variance or something.
Great. We're traditionally open, more open area, more, this is trying to...
The, the impervious area that's listed right now is actually allowing them to pretty much develop. But I mean, eighty-five percent is a lot, that's a lot of impervious coverage.
A lot of parking.
That's a lot of parking, that's a lot of building.
Okay.
So fifteen percent for grass space and open area isn't a whole lot, but, and it's, like I said, it's open for discussion, and twenty percent, eighty percent, um, that's something that we can look at, um...
And, I mean, I'd like to, I mean, my thought would be, I wouldn't wanna see the residential less than what we have for the, the independent. I mean, I'm thinking more like twenty percent, you know...
Eighty, eighty, twenty, then?
Yeah, for residential, again, just given a little bit more space. And again, when you're talking to five thousand, what was it, a five thousand square foot area, you're increasing it by five percent over what was proposed. The other thing that I just, looking at this table, that, and I'm thinking about a two-hundred-foot-long building, 'cause that's, you know, we're talking big, bigger stuff here, bigger concept. Fifty feet of space between those larger buildings, um, I don't know. It's, it may seem like a lot of space between single-family house, but when you have a three, four, or five-story building, and there's only fifty feet between it and the one next to it, it's not a lot of space. I don't know, I...
You can fit a fire truck in there.
I mean, my, my thought might be maybe something more like seventy-five feet, again, just to create a little bit more over space.
Buffer area.
More buffer space around the building.
Again, as you start doing that, you're gonna restrict what you can develop. You're gonna, you're gonna start to shoot yourself in the foot if you write it down on paper and put it into effect.
And then that, that separation between the buildings now becomes green space, so...
Do we say fifty feet minimum? I mean, I know that's what we're doing with the pad site in the lot area, it's minimum, so they can go higher than that.
Well, these, these are minimums already.
Yeah, so they're all, that's true, that's true, so it's already saying it's just fifty-foot minimum.
If you have somebody that does it nice, I've seen them where they would maintain that fifty foot, like at two corners of the buildings, but the corners would sit on angles, but the way this is written, you can have somebody just come start stacking them in, which isn't the most attractive.
No, I know what you mean. If you get somebody who's good and staggers them, you're right, it'll, it'll aesthetically look good.
Well, you could, you could actually say that if you want to, if, if, if they're in a straight line, then it...
Usually with...
Staggered, then you can have a fifty feet.
Usually they're quite with townhouses, you have to have offsets, I think you can only have so many units that can be the same face. I think that's in our ordinance, and then you have to stagger it, so you don't have that, what Glenn is describing, that straight line of buildings.
Right.
You have a little bit of differential offsets or whatever, then it, it looks...
Well, it's already in the SADO, is what you're saying.
I believe it, that's for townhouses, not necessarily for apartments, but that's something we might need to look at. But I think that would, if it's already covered, it might address your concern, Glenn, that we're not doing something that's just a straight line.
The other thing I think on the open space too, that I, I flagged, and I think it relates to the SADO definitions for this, for Central Green, called out seventy-five hundred square feet as the minimum size. It's pretty big when you consider only fifteen percent open space. You would need to, over, over an acre just to do that green space. I feel like when there's that list of, you gotta choose one of them, it almost is gonna make people not wanna do the green space.
Not do the open space.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're thinking maybe suggest a number that's less than seventy, a more realistic number?
I think it's, yeah, probably maybe not the open space, but maybe let's, smaller than seventy-five hundred square feet.
The green space.
Yeah.
Would you, what would you think about having a percentage of the total lot be green space, or open?
Seems to make sense.
Okay.
It just seems like a lot, when you do math with the coverage, it just didn't seem to...
I see where you're getting at.
Wouldn't that apply for the open area for twenty percent?
I think we're talking, like a common area?
Oh, oh, okay, common, a common space, okay.
Yeah, I just feel like that's one of your more utilized, like, amenities, and I feel like the language would almost preclude you from picking that one in the, the list, if you have to do one of these, because it takes up so much space.
Yep.
All right, hey, guys, now that we got a quiet moment, is two thoughts I have. I've been, I've been looking at those red lines on my phone and following the discussion. My first thought is, is, um, can we, can we get, uh, I'm not sure how to do it, but could we have an informal discussion at the county level, maybe have a meeting, or send this to them, and have an informal meeting with the planning, county planning commission, and get some of their in, input? The second item is, what are some of the other larger townships? their in, input. The second item is, what are some of the other larger townships in the county? How are they addressing, not specifically an overlay, but the various items that's in the documents that we're looking at? You know, whether it's apartment size or height, whatever it might be, is it, it might be interesting, at least to me, I think it'd be interesting, is how they're looking at it, how they're looking at it. And just, just, just my two cents because I'm, I have to admit, I'm not real comfortable with what I'm, from what I've read and what I'm hearing, that we're anywhere near ready for this overlay.
I, I think as far as other municipalities, I can contact Spring Township. We do work for them, some of the, some of the things they do, but I know the person in their planning department, see what some of their criteria is. They have a big apartment complex going in to, to address Jack's concern, see what some of their criteria is, just to stay consistent.
You know anybody in King of Prussia?
There's a few, upper, I think it's Lower Marion or Upper Marion, which-
Upper Marion.
Upper Marion.
King of Prussia area.
Yeah. We could look at their ordinance too.
I think that's what Jack's referring to, a larger.
The village type, like they have a collegeville and everything, yeah.
Another one would be Athelham Township.
Yes.
North Hampton County. They have, they have a location that kind of incorporates this type of.
Well, and then they add to that, if some of them have similar wording that we're looking at, because I, I am concerned that we're going to make this very restrictive. And I heard, I'm not sure who said it earlier, is, are we locking ourselves in in the future? And I had that same thought. And the second part of that is when we, when you talk to them or we talk to these other townships, well, how has it worked out for you? You know, with some of the, if they have similar requirements, what issues have they had? Has it been successful? Or what would they do differently?
Can we invite them in? Can we invite some of the planning commissioners in to talk to us? Or like you said, have a sidebar meeting somehow?
I mean, we could see, so Shannon, she retired a couple of years ago, I guess.
I believe so.
Shannon Rossman.
Oh, Ross.
But we, we could invite the-
Planning Commission.
Planning, not the, not the planning commission, but the planning office, somebody from the planning office, maybe to come in and speak with us.
Would the plant, so we're required to send this language to the county anyway for comments, but-
Right.
As maybe a more of an informal discussion, if the plan, planning commission would like, we can send it and ask for comments or if they would like to attend?
Maybe we could, maybe we could ask them-
To give us a presentation.
We'd like for them, if they could possibly have someone attend when they, to discuss their comments with us.
But, but really like a presentation on, there's got to be something from like the American planning organizations that what does a town center, a town common district, what would, what would it look like? What would a model look like?
Okay.
Okay, something like that where we could sort of, you know, get a general idea-
Yeah.
Instead of guessing.
That's a great idea.
Yep.
Yep.
Yep, yep, yep. That's, that's, yeah, I think that's on the right track.
Okay. As you just sit here and read it, you're just reading words. You're not looking at it, like you said, a model.
Yeah.
I think that is really where you want to go.
Okay.
Have something in front of you that you can see. This is what this is going to restrict and this is out.
So we were looking at, you know, looking here at section six. The one thing I wanted to just understand better, on the table, on the document, at the bottom, they have retaining wall setback up to 12 feet high. And then there were these three different criterias. So from a constructability standpoint, if you're trying to go to a property line?
Right. I think we have 10 already in our ordinance.
This won't work.
No, I agree with you 100%. I think we have to keep 10 because, at least 10 to get constructability and maintenance because if you get something in there-
10's tight.
10's tight. You're right, it is.
Yeah.
I think we have 10 because that's what Yuki, no, the magistrate.
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 Right. So we'll keep 10 there. And that was a comment from McCarthy Filenki.
Yeah. I mean, you're too far, honestly.
Yeah, they had, they have a restricted site and that's, that's why he's proposing that language.
Because as those walls go up, you have to do the tiebacks.
You're right.
And, and, you know, quite frankly, I, I really feel like it should be more than 10. But Joe, is that something you could perhaps look at with retaining wall design?
Sure.
And see, see for a 12-foot wall, what the actual tieback distance is because we should, we should plan for that, I think. That you don't have a set of plans that's approved and that the contractor is then asked to build something and that you can't build.
They can't build, right. I agree. I agree. I, I don't feel comfortable and I, I agree with you. Probably 10's not sufficient, but it's probably, we're probably better in a lot of other ordinances. A lot of them are five and I don't, I don't agree with that either. I think you need to have sufficient area.
And then thinking about that again, because we do have some areas that have some embankments or hills, should you, should you provide something beyond that that would be sort of like multi-level? And then if, hey, if it's 12 to 20 feet, now it increases by X on that setback. Just a thought.
Yep.
Would you, Joe, would you like to just touch on the steep slopes?
Sure. One of, one of the, one of the comments that we've gotten from Chris Filenki is he added a, I'll say a, a note or a footnote underneath the dimensional requirements and say, per the definition contained in section 390-6, and add the requirement to comply with section 390-48C3 for existing man-made slopes for lots under 43, 5, 6D square feet. I prefer if we do not deviate from our zoning ordinance. Our steep slope ordinance is pretty thorough. It's probably one of the more thorough ordinances out there. This is basically allowing for man-made steep slopes to be put in here. And that's something we're trying to avoid and actually Will and I have an issue with, with a dwelling that's created steep slopes. So it, it is a problem. I mean, I know with the magistrate, the slopes are pretty steep in that area too, but I think I would rather just keep the steep slopes under our zoning ordinance and they still need to comply with what our requirements are. So that percentage is man-made or if it's natural, you got to subtract out formulas and everything to do if the planning commission's in agreement. I think if we don't, we're going to have some inconsistencies and then you're going to have problems, I, I believe.
So if I'm understanding that, what they would be able to do with it, with the suggestion here is not include man-made slopes in their calculations.
Correct.
And thereby giving them more area.
Yeah.
To construct.
Yeah. It, it gives them a little leeway, but I, I don't think it's leeway that we should be giving into. I think the reason he put it in there because they're looking at a site that has slopes. And they might have to create man-made ones because of the balance to site and degrade it and, and so forth. I just, I, my opinion is, is keeping what we have. If we're going to make a change, then we probably should just change the zoning section of steep slopes. It's always a sensitive area and I, I think it's important that we protect.
Couldn't, couldn't it be addressed when they came with their plans to provide that waiver?
They could-
Certain areas?
For, for steep slopes, they would, they could not ask for a waiver. They would have to ask for a variance because it's in their zoning.
That's what I meant.
So they can, they have, i- in different municipalities, it's either treated as a conditional use where the board, the board of supervisors would make that decision. And it's also treated as a, they call it a special exception. So the zoning hearing board, they could go in front of the zoning hearing board and request relief. And if they can prove a hardship, zoning hearing board may give them that relief. So I think it's just a, the question we have is, is if, if you change it, then it, it's, it creates some problems, I think.
To your point, Joe, I mean, I've seen some things in other townships where they have allowed man-made slopes and the slopes are almost unmaintainable.
That, that's, that's my biggest, man-made slopes, you're, you're exactly correct, Glenn. If they're not done properly and not maintained, they become erosion problems and they have slope failures and so forth. It's, that's why I think it's important that we maintain what we have.
Moving on to section seven, Chris Filenki had recommended that we revise the mid, the remove high-rise and revise garden to include the rise in the definition that you proposed. I don't think staff had any adverse comments. And then the last comment we had, actually we have two, two more comments, one being the parking regulations. And then we'll actually go back up to additional bonuses then because I know we should talk about that. Section nine, parking requirements, I think township staff, based on Metropolitan's submission a few months ago, we were proposing, one second. We were proposing to have apartments have a requirement of two, two spaces, which also includes any possible garages per unit. I'm sorry, I'm trying to read this and that's not correct.
Yeah, because I don't see any red lines on this one.
No, I have it handwritten here. We're kind of blending a bunch of different.
Well, they have off-street parking.
Yeah, but-
That's what you're talking about.
Yeah, it's at, at what number of spaces do we want per each?
Per unit, yeah. If it's a townhouse and has a garage, then they can utilize the garage as meeting one of their spaces. But if it's condos or, or townhouses that don't have the garage, then they need to be two, two spaces per unit. And then guest parking, I believe it's going to be one space per three units. And this came from our discussions with Metropolitan and so forth. So we, we made those revisions, I believe, didn't we?
Yes. We proposed them, but.
Okay. So we, we would, we would make it consistent with what we're having.
I mean, just the question I have was just, I mean, I did see here one, one space per unit for apartments and condominiums. And I'm just asking the question if that's realistic. I mean, most families have two vehicles.
We're saying two spaces per unit.
Oh, you proposed two.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we're finding out more families have more cars because of drivers.
Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
Three to four cars sometimes.
Yeah.
And you're proposing three spaces instead of five for the guest parking?
One space per three units. So for every three units would be one space, instead of one space for every five units.
Right.
Okay.
So every one of these should, the ones should be two?
Where the units are should be three units.
So apartments would be two units and then townhomes, I believe, townhouses, I believe we were doing three units.
Whoa.
Or three spaces per unit.
They have one and a half.
They have one and a half.
So-
And you're saying three.
Three.
Oh, my.
Okay.
What about above that, they say?
Build a parking garage?
Jesus.
Yeah, for anything else. It's all parking.
Well, we had this conversation before with, when Metropolitan was in here and they were proposing.
Yeah.
Where were they proposing?
Behind Home Depot.
Home Depot.
Yeah.
And these are the numbers that we pulled from our, that old language.
Oh, that's-
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, Home Depot's using half the parking lot for, for greenery, selling trees because there's nobody parking there.
Do they have to vote on anything?
No, not right now.
Getting late, I gotta go.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
That was Mike.
And then the last red, red line comment was, Joe touched on this-
Center line?
Earlier with the center lines and the distances from, from-
Streets.
It's not.
That should be, my recommendation is we stick with the SADO requirement, which is the 390-36. That specifies the separation distance, I believe, I did flag it out, between the Collector streets and so forth. They're looking at just 150. I, we've, I feel we, they consist with what we have in our ordinance. Ours varies with residential driveway and then it defines what's a distance if a Collector street is involved, which is 80, then 120 feet if an arterial street is involved and so forth. And, and I think for consistency, I would recommend sticking with the SADO and we just reference that section. Does anybody have any comments?
Anytime, anytime that we can reference a SADO, I think we should. That's my opinion. We, we, this whole book is here for that reason. So.
I, I agree. I mean, I, I think there's areas where you can give relief, but it's better when it comes to those kind of issues that we stick with what we have.
So I think we'll do in the meantime is make, make some revisions. I'll try and forward it as soon as possible for your review and comment. Again-
We'll do a little research on some other communities as well. I have a couple of resources that I can tap into and then see what some of those samples are. And then we can always distribute that to everybody.
And we'll also reach out to the county to see if they have any presentation on mixed use residential overlays, redevelopment type discussion.
Well, just one more quick comment-
Yep.
On the SADO definitions, do we, would it be wise, there's a lot of very specific items as far as materials for like sidewalks, lighting, benches and whatnot. A lot of this is along 422-
Mm-hmm.
With PennDOT involved. Do we put some catchall in there that basically covers us in the fact that PennDOT ultimately has jurisdiction over a lot of those things? There's some very specific requirements in there that PennDOT may not allow.
Okay.
Right.
For ultimate PennDOT approval if required or?
Yeah, however we do it. And I'm thinking it's maybe through like one section rather than like-
Yep.
Calling each one out, just saying like all of those, PennDOT ultimately has jurisdiction over-
PennDOT.
Their right of way.
Right.
Like for sidewalks, for example, it's not even, like, I don't think we allow concrete sidewalks. It's bricks, pavers, like stuff like that that PennDOT likely wouldn't approve.
Okay.
Nope. Good point. All right, Glenn. All right, so Will, you'll get comments back to us or get us a revised.
And we want to look at the additional bonuses again, after, you know, the next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Definitely want to look at the bonuses again.
Okay.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Anybody? Oh, I have a motion on the floor.
I'll save it.